This conference will now be recorded.
We'll wait a few more minutes. I got 6:57. When I make a note is the only council person I see is Mr. Ricketts. Is there another council person out there? If so, speak up, please.
Mic check. Can everybody hear me okay?
So, Councilwoman Mall. Councilwoman Mall, you gotta, I want to ask you a question.
Yes.
Tell me about your ball team. Where are y'all at right now?
Well, we, we lost in the regional finals to Alito. So, one, two games from winning state, but the girls had a great season. They just kind of had an off game and you can't have an off game in the regional finals. So, Alito went on to win their semifinal game, but then lose to Barber's Hill in the state 5A championship. So, it was a great season. Very proud of the girls.
Very good, very good. Well, it comes from a long line of fast pitch softball players. I know that.
And we have, we're only graduating three senior starters, so we should have quite a, quite a good squad next year, too.
Wow. Is that Councilman Nahera?
Yes, sir. I tried to, I tried to log in with the go-to meeting, but I can't get on, so I had to call in. So, I'm here.
This is Jeff. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Councilmember Rob. Okay. Does anybody know about Councilmember Warren Rob? We have four councilmembers present. They will go ahead and call this meeting to order. There is a present, a crowd present, Councilman Ricketts, Councilwoman Mall, Councilwoman Clark, and Councilman Nahera. Hello, City of Hasslet. I'll start off with the invocation, if you please. Thank you, almighty God. You are our Creator, our Sustainer. You are our light and our fortress. You are a strength in our wisdom. We ask that your guiding hand lead us through this meeting. May we approach our task with wisdom and approach each other with respect. May our conduct create an environment of cooperation and kindness, and thank you for helping us accomplish our work this day. We ask these things in your powerful name. Amen. If you would rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, I see that Councilman Rob has joined us. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item three is appointment of acting city secretaries. Let me give you a brief overview. We have identified a interim city secretary, but this interim city secretary won't be with us for another couple of weeks, so we need an acting city secretary. And am I having a senior moment? Katrina White. Katrina, forgive me, please. I'm still learning everybody's name. Anyway. Would you open up the PDF? Someone, let me ask all the, hello, everybody. Caller three, caller two, seven, six, and five. If you would all mute your mics, we can hear everything that's going on in the background. Everybody, please mute your mic. All right, well, it's quiet. Let's proceed now. Mr. Quinn, you want to go over this?
Yes, sir. Katrina White has been, in prior years, been involved with the council and being an acting city secretary. She is going to do this on a basis until the new interim person arrives. She's very capable. She knows how to take minutes or record minutes, et cetera. So, I think Katrina will be a good candidate for this job. Everybody stay with her, and she's quite capable.
Thank you.
Again, with regard to this position, I recommend that Katrina White be appointed the acting city secretary. The council, I'll turn it over to you.
Mayor Holsy.
And who, identify your name.
This is Councilman Ricketts.
Councilman Ricketts.
I move to appoint Katrina White as the acting city secretary until the position has been filled.
Oh, wait a minute. There's been no discussion.
Well, excuse me, Councilman Rob, is that you can have discussion. It can second, and then you can actually go into discussion.
So, you're saying we no longer can discuss things before the motion?
Uh, no, I'm not saying that, but the, you will follow Robert's Rules of Order, which we don't, is technically, it's required that a motion and a second be made, then you can have discussion. I know historically, we do, and, which is fine, discuss before the item, but it's not, no one is subverting discussion. So, a motion has been made by Councilman Ricketts to appoint Katrina White as acting city secretary. Is there a second?
I second that.
Councilman Hector, second. Discussion, Councilman Rob.
So, I'd like to ask where we're proceeding a long-term solution to the city secretary.
Where we are is, we have identified through a staffing agency that specializes in municipalities, a interim city secretary, which we had presented last meeting, and this city secretary will join us in two weeks' time, the 21st. That is correct on that date, Mr. Quinn? Is that right, the 21st?
Yeah, so, the two weeks from today, she has to give, will be here and has, is quite capable for an interim, has been a city secretary for at least 20 years, had retired, and the staffing agency recommended her. She's highly qualified to the interim process. Having the interim in place allows time for a search for a full-time city secretary.
So, that's where we are in the process. It's the same process we had presented in our plan. The
So, this is Councilman Rob again.
Yes.
Will the council get more than one candidate for interim city secretary to consider?
We, we had two candidates. We interviewed two candidates, Marcy, Mayor Holsy, and I, and those were the two that were presented to us by two different staffing agencies, and it was determined that this candidate was the best fit for the city for an interim basis.
Mayor Holsy.
Mr. Hector.
So, this, this is just confirming, so this is just an interim position until you find a full-time city secretary? Is that correct?
This position right now before you is for acting city secretary for Katrina White, our current employee, to act as the city secretary. We need this for legal reasons, and which time in two weeks, our official interim city secretary will be installed.
Okay.
That is a temporary position as well, so that we can pursue that permanent position, that we can interview, advertise, and interview the candidates and bring them to the council for their interview.
So, city secretary works for the council. So, you're saying the council can only either accept or reject one candidate for interim?
City secretary reports to the mayor, Councilman Rob, and the city council. It is according to local government code, the mayor's statutory responsibility says the mayor shall appoint these particular officers, which city secretary is one. The, so we're just, we're following the rules.
So, but the council has to confirm it. You can't, you can't, you can't hire by, unilaterally, by yourself. The council has
Mr. Rob, Councilman Rob, we are not discussing that item. This item pertains specifically the appointment of Ms. White to act as city secretary for a two-week period.
This is Mayor Protem. That was my question. So, does the motion need to say that this is a two-week term for Ms. White, or does it have to note that when the interim starts on the 21st?
Acting, you know, well, you can make that motion that way, yes. So, the motion and a second has been made to accept Katrina White as the acting city secretary.
This is Mayor Protem. Mar, again. So, Rob, Alabon, do you think we need to make that specific in the motion, or do you think it's fine the way it stands?
Mayor Protem, I think it's completely up to you. I think we'll be bringing forward the interim city secretary agreement and installation on the 21st. So, when that appointment is, is made, then I think this acting secretary appointment will go away. So, if you want to specify two weeks, that's fine. I don't think you have
The council to consider is that in our plan, there is no particular, there's no council approval with regard to this interim position. We're just merely filling this position so that we can keep business moving and a search for that permanent position.
Mayor Holsy, this is Councilman Ricketts one more time.
Councilman Ricketts.
I, I'd like to just address that I look at this as filling that position until it's filled. God forbid something were to happen to this interim person in the next two weeks also, too. But if we actually put dates on it, then we'd be asking to have, make motions again to continue Katrina, if that's, if we go forth that direction, for further, for further. So, I would say that you don't want to put dates in it. You want to do it until you actually get that interim city secretary put into place.
Well, your motion has been made without date. The motion taken on the floor has been made without date. We are just going into further explanation of what the pathway is to find a permanent city secretary. So, this is the first of three steps. First step is this, acting a position for approximately two weeks, an interim position to give us longevity of time, a month, two months, three months, whatever it takes, to find that, find those candidates for the permanent position, of which will be presented to the council. So, you have a motion on the floor and a second to accept Ms. Katrina White as the acting city secretary. I call for the vote. Councilman Ricketts.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mall.
Aye.
Councilwoman Clark.
Aye.
Councilman Nahera.
Aye.
Councilmember Rob.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes five to zero. Katrina, thank you very much. You are the acting city secretary. We presume, proceed with our meeting.
Thank you.
Items are citizen participation. I have been forwarded, Ms. Hillborn would like to speak to several items, three items on item F. Would you like to speak now or hold to those particular items?
Thank you. I would prefer to speak when the items come up to the council.
Very good. Thank you. This is an opportunity for citizens to make comments. Is there anyone out there besides Ms. Hillborn that would like to make any comments, either now or at any particular agenda item? I seen none. Does anybody else, Ms. White, do you see anybody?
No, sir.
Very good. Okay, we go to item five, community, items of community interest. City offices in Hasslet Library will be closed Monday, July 5th, 2021, in the observance of Independence Holiday. We have a Carter Blood Care Friday, June 18th. You have a fire attached there. Carter Blood Care is in big need of donors. So, if you can, please roll up your sleeves. Next item. Five C is mayor address, mayor's address. I know this is new, but it's something that I only employ only once a month, but anyway. Ladies and gentlemen of Hasslet City Council, today marks three weeks, four days since your newly-elected governing body has been installed. I know you're interested, so I will give you an update, an overview of what has and is taking place. I have been given, I've been getting acquainted with the staff and the processes, and I'm happy to report we have a very capable staff in all areas, including public works, judicial, and administrative. As you know, Diana Buchanan, our former city secretary required, retired, Marcy Lamb, Jim Quinn, and I have identified an interim city secretary for First, Texas First Group, a temp agency specializing in municipalities, who will start June 21st and should be present at our next council meeting. For the next two weeks, as we have just completed, Katrina White, our administrative services and special events planner, will be our acting city secretary. I have been touring our subdivisions and city facilities, making note of road maintenance needs, flooding concerns, city facilities conditions, as well as equipment and personnel needs. We are in fair condition, but improvements are needed. With the already approved subdivisions under construction, I estimate the population will grow from a present estimation of 1,800 to approximately 7,600. As our population grows daily, so does our equipment, facilities, and personnel needs. Given we are in a budgeting season, my proposal, my proposed budget to the council will be addressing these needs. I've also been reviewing with staff assistants our comprehensive plan, zoning ordinance, and our master thoroughfare plan, land use plan, and to include our Old Town Plan and Strategic Plan. All of these will be evaluated from the point of view of Hasslet first, our quality of life, our small businesses, and our uniqueness of a semi-ruhr atmosphere. With regard to our master thoroughfare plan, particular, particular attention will be given to FM 156 here in the needed future. Day by day, the industrial traffic is increasing, coupled with the increasing train traffic. Hasslet and North Fort Worth has become gridlocked. Our quality of life has suffered, as well as our small businesses have suffered. More traffic does not mean more business in our circumstances. We will explore solutions with the intent of increasing safety and opening our roadways to our citizens. I will keep you informed. I will provide you the citizenry of Hasslet and monthly update of these and other topics to provide another means of transparency of your local government. I appreciate it, and with that, we'll move on to agenda item number six. I've lost my screen. There I am. Item six, staff reports, Keller Hasslet Road estimated completion date. I know everybody's anxious about that. Mr. Rogers from our Public Works Department, can you address this?
We can't hear you, David.
David, we can't hear you. Your mic's not working. Still can't hear anything. Mr. Quinn, can you translate?
Estimated completion date, my text on, is August 21st.
August 21st, and that's when they'll open the road up?
Yes, sir. That's when they anticipate opening the road.
Very good.
Come in now.
Oh, yes, we hear you.
Okay. I don't know what my other microphone's going on, but yeah, the schedule is still that they're supposed to finish and complete on August 20th, that their substantial completion should be somewhere around that first week of August. They're hoping to have the bridge complete and striping done so that they could get bus traffic through since school opening will be coming shortly thereafter. So, that's their goal right now. They still will have some topsoil, seating, some permanent signage that will still have to be completed in those final couple of weeks, but those are things that they can hose down a lane here and there different times of the day, where they will keep things, you know, hopefully get the school buses in and out, then they can do a little work, school buses back in and out in the afternoon, and they can get things done since it shouldn't be too much. Right now, they're pretty much on track.
This is Mayor Protem. I had a question. So, the rain, all the, all the rain hasn't really pushed them that far behind schedule? There's still, I know, obviously, they tend to spend
They got pretty lucky. They got a lot of their downstream dirt work already completed, and they got the box culverts themselves already in place. So, really, right now, it's once this stops raining long enough where they're not fatting the water, they'll be able to start putting down and getting the deckwork started. So, once they, that's the biggest part of the job is getting that first part, getting those box culverts in place, which they've already accomplished that.
Any other questions, council? All right. If not, then we'll move on to item seven, the consent agenda. Looks like our consent agenda consists of the city council meeting minutes of May 17th.
This is Councilmember Mall. I move to approve the consent agenda with the one change that was emailed out today.
Is there a second?
Councilmember Clark, second.
There is a second. Call for the vote. Councilmember Mall.
Aye.
Councilmember Clark.
Aye.
Councilmember Nahera.
Aye.
Councilmember Rob.
Aye.
Councilmember Ricketts.
Aye.
It's approved by vote of five to zero. We could go to item eight, public hearings, ordinances, resolutions. Item 8A, hold a public hearing, discuss, consider, and act on a preliminary plat of lots one and block one of Harmon Edition being 3.67 acre tract of land in the J M Lilly survey abstract 979, generally located on the east side of Harmon Road, south of Blue Mound Road, east and north of Keller Hicks Road in the exoterritorial jurisdiction of the City of Hasslet. And I understand this is the, in layman's terms, the Alamo fireworks, where that is. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Very good.
So, this is, this is a preliminary plat of 3.6 acres. Reason for this preliminary plat is the property owners wanting to subdivide out the proposed lot one for the fireworks retail center. Water service is being provided by the city on, for an existing line on Harmon Road, sanitary sewers being provided by private septic system, and access is being made to Harmon Road. Can I answer any questions that you have? Planning and zoning commission recommended approval by a vote of five to zero. So, I've got a question. So, this is where the fire, fireworks stand is, or are they looking to build another fireworks station, stand, or why are they wanting to subdivide this? They are actually in the process of building one right now on that location. They're just replacing the one that's already there? This property is located just to the north of that, the portable buildings that they've used in the past.
Wes, let me ask a question. This is Mayor Holsy. Is, we got another item coming up right here, which is a, another preliminary plat of a much, a fractional acre. How do these two play together? What's the point of this?
The, the next, the next item on your agenda is actually the final plat of the, of lot one. So, if you look at the preliminary plat, the preliminary plat shows two lots. That's, so you preliminary plat the entire tract of land, original tract of land, that's the 3.6 acres. Your next item, 8B, is Your next item eight B is the final plat of lot one. So when they, they're getting a, they've got a building permit from the county to build on that lot one right now. And so when they get ready to build on the proposed lot two, that's what shown on the preliminary plat, they'll have to come back through into a final plat on lot two.
Very good.
Mayor, councilman Rob, I'd like some questions for Wes.
Please.
So Wes, I, I believe the, the this property is across, is just to the east of the water tower, is that correct?
That is correct, yes, sir.
So I think this is the property where a caller on a previous council meeting in the public discussion was admonishing us slowly approving this and she was saying, you're missing all these all the, the tax, taxes that the city would get from approving this. And since this is in the ETJ, does the city get any taxes from this? And I have another question.
Taxes are not my expertise, but it's my understanding that no, we would not receive any sales tax or property tax from this property. So the only money that the city would have received from this would be applications for the preliminary plat and any water tap fees.
So the
I'm just sorry, this is in the county. This is just, it's in the county.
Yes, I'm aware of that. Apparently the applicant wasn't, that was my point. So so this, the city is servicing this property with water and I, I, somebody can correct me if I'm wrong. I think that was an agreement with the people that used to live there years and years ago, because ordinarily the city doesn't serve services to facilities located in the ETJ because they pay no taxes. So I'm wondering, is any effort, I'm wondering why we're continuing now that those residences are not there, effectively they've all been torn down as far as I know, I could be wrong. But I'm, I'm wondering why we're still providing them with water service when they're still in the ETJ. They could petition and ask to be annexed and then they'd be happy to give them city services. Any thoughts on that? Anyone?
Yes, sir. I can, I can touch on that and I may have to get some other experts to, to give a little bit more detailed explanation, but the, this property, I'm not familiar with any agreement in the future or in the past regarding water service, but this property is in our CCN, which in layman's terms says that we have to provide water to them and, and Rob, please interrupt me if I say something wrong here. But so essentially we have to provide them water. We do not have to provide them sewer is my understanding. And so I know that in the past we've used the providing sewer as a kind of a carrot for annexation, but in this case they didn't need sewer. So that's why they just needed water from us. So we didn't have that carrot to encourage annexation in this case.
Okay, thank you.
I can help Wes out a little if you want me to. He's, he's correct. We have a CCN for water, but not for our sewer system. And that CCN does include our entire ETJ and that does state that we will provide water service to anyone in that area.
This is council member or mayor for tomorrow. What does CCN stand for?
Certificate of Convenience and Necessity. They are issued by PCEQ.
It's a state mandate that we have to provide the water if we hold that CCN. Any other questions?
So I, I have one more question. I'm still not clear why they're dividing this land. So are they going to tear the old building down and just put a new one on it? But it's not clear why they're wanting to, to subdivide it into two lots. Does anyone know that?
Sure. I, let me see if I can answer that question a little bit better for you. So the, the property that you know as today that has the two portable buildings that there's, that they have in the past sold fireworks out of, this property that we're looking at right now is just located to the north of that. So this Alamo fireworks has purchased the, the lot one that's in question to build a new facility on. So that's why they're having to subdivide. The subdivision ordinance requires that if you carve out a piece of land out of a larger tract, you have to go through a preliminary plat and final plat process. So that's why we're doing, we're doing here today. That help?
It helps a little bit. I just don't know if they're going to keep the, the existing building there. If, if it was, so it was sold, the three point six seven acres was sold and they're keeping the point nine two two acres, is that correct?
Just the point nine two two acres has been sold. And the remainder is being left on the original owner. And I believe, I believe I saw Bo Trainer who was the applicant representative. You may be able to speak to the, what the status of the old buildings are going to be. To, this is Bo Trainer. I'm with Peloton Land Solutions representing the client or the applicant is Alamo title or Alamo fireworks. The, as Wes was saying, the original three plus acres was owned by Parviz Zahari. Alamo came in and purchased zero point nine two two acres from that group and I'm sorry. I'm sorry, it sounded like there was a question, sorry. The, hence the preliminary plat, we're moving into the final plat. When it comes to the buildings on the zero point nine acres, any existing structures are going to be demoed and I, I've not been up there recently. I think a lot of that work has already been done. Giving way, giving way for them to construct the new building. The intent of this is to have it a permanent structure. The, the temporary one or the not as permanent one that's just off site. My understanding is that is to go away. So this is a replacement, not an addition. Does that help?
Yeah, that, that answers my question.
Okay.
Also, you have any other questions? If not, could we have a motion?
Do you need to hold the public hearing first?
Oh, I'm sorry. Sure do. Thank you. I'd like to open this up to a public hearing. And is there anyone who'd like to speak to this item? Eight A. I do not see anybody requesting to speak. Does, Ms. White, do you have anybody there? You know of?
I do not see anyone. In the chat.
I'll close the public hearing. Number three, discussion. Councils are further discussion. If there's no further consent, discussion of item four is consideration and act on a recommendation. We could accept a motion.
This is mayor for tomorrow. I'll attempt it. I like it when they're written for me. It helps, but I think I can do this. It says, I approve. I'm making a motion to approve the proposed, the preliminary plat to proposed lot one. Diane, say anything else or stop there?
I'm sorry, if I could interject, the preliminary plat is for lots one and two. So it's the entire preliminary plat, if I could just.
Oh, let me go to the top. Yes, okay. Let me, let me start again. I make a motion to approve the preliminary plat of lots one and two, block one of the Harmon addition being three point six six seven acre tract in the J M Lily survey abstract nine seven nine.
Motion has been made to approve. Is there a second?
It's council member Rob, I'll second.
There's a second. I'll call for a roll call vote. Unless there's discussion, is there any discussion? I'll call for the vote. Council member Morrow.
Aye.
Council member Clark.
Aye.
Council member Nahara.
Aye.
Council member Ricketts.
Aye.
Council member Rob.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes five zero.
Thank you.
We go to item eight B, hold a public hearing, discuss, consider and act on the final plat of lot one, block one of the Harmon road addition being zero point nine two two acre tract of land in the J M Lily survey abstract nine seven nine generally located on the east side of Harmon road, south of Blue Mountain road, east and north of Keller Hicks road in the extraterritorial jurisdiction of the city of Hasslet, Texas. Staff, please present.
I, in the efforts of time, I think we've already talked about this one quite a bit. So if there's any other questions, this is just the final plat of lot one in this case of the subdivision that you've already approved. So I can answer any questions.
Wes, this is council member Ricketts. Just one question, just for my own knowledge. I did notice that the building itself is already going up, the permanent structure. Is that normal prior to us approving the plat?
It's a very good question, council member. Normally, no. Normally if it falls within the city, we normally would not issue a building permit until the final plat has been approved at, at this stage. However, two things are kind of different here. One, this is not in the city limits, so we don't issue building permits in our ETJ. So that's through the fire department or that's through the fire marshal's offices of the county. Also, there's a provision in our subdivision ordinance that says that we do have to authority to issue grading permits. And so obviously they have to do some grading before they start building. But that provision says that once the preliminary plat is approved, the grading permit can be issued. In this case, historically Hasslet has always approved a grading permit both inside the city and outside the city when staff has approved the plat, not necessarily going through the public hearing process, but it's just a risk that the applicant knows that they're taking and that's what happened in this case. Thank you.
With that, staff, are you finished with your presentation on this item? Just note to the council is that we'll have discussion after the public hearing. I'd like to open the public hearing to this. Is anyone that like to speak to this item, item eight B? Ms. White, I do not see anybody. Do you have any chat or anything of that nature requesting to speak?
No, sir, I do not.
Hey, given that, I will close the public hearing. Item three, council discussion. There's no discussion. Let's go to item four of eight B, consider an action on recommendation. We can take a motion. There is no motion on the floor.
Mayor for tomorrow will make a motion. I move to approve the final plat of lot one, block one of the Harmon addition being point nine two two acre tract in the J M Lily survey abstract nine seven nine.
Council, council member Morrow's made a motion to approve. Is there a second?
This is council member Ricketts, I'll second.
Council member Ricketts, second. Any further discussion? I call for the vote. Council member Morrow.
Aye.
Council member Clark.
Aye.
Council member Nahara.
Aye.
Council member Ricketts.
Aye.
Council member Rob.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes five oh. Eight C. I'll wait for the screen to update. Item eight C, discuss, consider and act to make appointment to fill place nine, alternate two of the Hasslet Community and Economic Development Corporation type B board. And we have several candidates. Hey, Ms. Skinner, Ms. Hillborn and Ms. Broyles. And I believe all are present. Ms. Skinner, are you present? I know Ms. Hillborn is present. Ms. Broyles, are you present? I thought for sure I saw him. Nonetheless, there for you. I was asking that in case the council wanted to ask any questions of the candidates.
So mayor, this is council member Rob. I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion that we approve Patricia Hillborn to the as a place nine alternate two of the Hasslet Community and Economic Development Corporation type B board.
Council member Rob. I'll second.
Council member Rob has made a motion to appoint Ms. Hillborn. Council member Morrow has seconded. Any discussion?
I just want to say one other thing, mayor for tomorrow. I just, it's exciting to see people filling our vacancies and getting the boards back to having everybody on them. So that's very exciting when we're sitting in meetings. We have to, we have to look at different people and make that decision. So I want to thank everybody that volunteered their time to be a civil servant.
I would like to make a comment though, is that you're not considering anybody new.
This was council member Ricketts. I just, I have one question, mayor Halsey.
Yes.
I, I have heard of other people that have actually been interested in this board also. So was this list limited down to just these three at this point or was there other people considered?
These are the only people who submitted their application.
I know one person that actually did submit an application and has not heard back. And so that's the reason I'm asking the question.
I'm not aware of any other submissions.
Okay.
There'd be, there'd be no reason to exclude anybody.
That, that was my question. If there was any way that it was skinny down at all prior to here.
Oh, no.
Unless we receive their application after last Friday, perhaps.
This was an application of almost, almost two months ago, prior to.
This is mayor for tomorrow. You're, you're correct, council member Ricketts, because I, I knew someone that applied. Do they choose though, does this have to be in the city of Hasslet to serve on this board or could they have been outside of the city limits? That's the only thing I can think of.
Okay, for this one, it's residents within the city or residents who own a business that's located within the city.
Does this count, mayor Proton Morrow, are you aware or councilman Ricketts, did this candidate fall into either of those categories?
I'm unaware. I, I know that they also know, um, mayor Proton Morrow.
Hello?
Hello.
So I, I don't know if everyone heard that echo, but I couldn't hear anything.
Yeah, I did and we muted everyone. So you'll have to unmute yourself because I don't know who, you know, whose microphone that was.
Let me ask this, so that no one is excluded from the candidates. I know there's Let me ask this, so that no one is excluded from the candidates, I know there's a motion and a second, would, Councilmember Rob, would you consider delaying this till the next meeting so we can confirm?
I can speak to that. I, she does not qualify as a business owner in the city. She doesn't have an actual business in the city of Haslett. So that would be, I guess, why she wasn't considered.
So she, is she a resident of Haslett?
Not in the city proper, no.
I have a question, I have a question about the other candidates. I mean, there was no discussion amongst us, you know, while we're choosing one particular person over the other two. So I know we have a motion, but I say we, you know, maybe consider putting this off to, until the next meeting.
Let me tell the council, this is for Councilmember Nahera, is, there's a second, you know, a motion is made, there is a second, and then discussion can approve. So if you'd like to discuss now, it's all up to you.
Okay, well, I just made my suggestion, so just, just to consider, you know, these other candidates, you know, learn a little bit more about all of them, and then, and then make a decision. But, okay, I understand that there's a motion in place.
You can, all right, very good. But is there any other discussion? If there's not, then I'll call for the vote. Mayor Pro Tim Morrow?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark?
Aye.
Councilmember Nahera?
No.
Councilmember Ricketts?
No.
Councilmember Rob?
Aye.
Motion passes three to zero, or three to two. Motion passes three to two. Welcome aboard, Mrs. Hillborn. Thank you. Let's go to item eight D, consider, discuss, consider and act to make appointments to vacant positions on the Haslett Public Library Board. If we could open up that PDF, we have four candidates there, and I believe we have, what, three positions open here? Place five, place eight, alternate one, and place nine, alternate two. So there's three positions to be filled.
Mayor for tomorrow.
Please.
Once again, I'd like to make the comment that I, it's exciting seeing people volunteer to fill our boards. I would like to make a motion, and I don't know, I guess I'll do one at a time, to put Leah Preston in place five. I really was interested in her literacy experience and working with students with special needs and dyslexia.
Okay, well, that's good. That's a good idea, is take these one at a time, these places. So motion is made to appoint Leah Preston to place five. Is there a second?
Councilmember Rob, I'll second.
There is a second. Councilmember Rob? Any discussion? I call for the vote. Mayor Pro Tim Morrow?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark?
Aye.
Councilmember Nahera?
Aye.
Councilmember Ricketts?
Aye.
Councilmember Rob?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes five to zero. Welcome, Mr. Preston. All right, we have place eight, alternate one.
This is Councilmember Rob, can we, one item of discussion. For the original application, you know, I asked a list address and references and that kind of thing. And for, we received that from Ms. Skinner, but not for Marilyn Broyles or Benjamin Drury. The only application that we saw was in the packet, and that information has been redacted. Now, you might want to bring out that for the library board, since it was very, went through a period where it was very difficult to secure enough volunteer, city of Haslett volunteers to fill out the board, the council at the time, and that was a number of years ago, voted to be, to have the capability to fill those vacant positions with folks that lived outside of Haslett, so long as they lived within the Northwest ISB jurisdiction. Because we have a lot of users that are in the vicinity, they just don't live in Haslett. So the council at that time thought that this was a way to get more, to fill out that board. And I think, and I'm speaking for myself and probably others, we'd rather have Haslett residents appointed to these, so, but for these, I know Ms. Skinner is a Haslett resident. I don't know.
I know that Marilyn Broyles is a Haslett resident.
All four are Haslett residents.
And Benjamin Drury lives in U. White.
Okay.
So all, all three are residents.
Okay, well, that's, that's good to know. I'd like to ask in the future if you could send the unredacted applications to the council.
As part of public record, and it's some, I'm not quite sure why the redaction is. Is that to protect the personal information?
That's correct. Because the whole package is public information.
I don't think we published anybody's address.
Correct.
So we, again, we have place eight, alternate one. Is there a nomination or appointment? Or place eight, alternate one?
Yeah, this is Councilmember Rob, I'll nominate Mrs. Marilyn Broyles for that position.
Councilman Rob nominates Marilyn Broyles. Is there a second?
I'll second. This is Councilmember Ricketts.
Councilmember Ricketts, seconds. Any discussion? Call for the vote. Mayor Pro Tim Morrow?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark?
Aye.
Councilmember Nahera?
Aye.
Councilmember Ricketts?
Aye.
Councilmember Rob?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Welcome, Ms. Broyles, thank you very much. We have, last one is place nine, alternate two.
Mayor, this is Councilmember Rob again. I would like to nominate Benjamin Drury for that position.
Councilmember Rob nominates Benjamin Drury. Is there a second?
Mayor Pro Tim Morrow, seconds.
Mayor Pro Tim Morrow, seconds. Any discussion? I call for the vote. Mayor Pro Tim Morrow?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark?
Aye.
Councilmember Nahera?
Aye.
Councilmember Ricketts?
Aye.
Councilmember Rob?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. Welcome, Mr. Drury. Thank you very much. Thank you, council. It's, it is exciting to see we got people wanting to serve on our boards. Now, we will go to item eight E, consider and act on resolution zero zero eight dash two zero two one, approving and authorizing signatories on the City of Haslett Bank Accounts. Ms. Hillborn, did you want to speak to this item?
No, sir, it's eight F.
Eight F.
Excuse me, excuse me, eight E, not, not D, but E.
Eight D, or eight E, thank you. Okay, Ms. Lamb, you want to address this?
Yes, Mayor. In order to get the signature cards changed for the change in the council, and also with the resignation of the city secretary, we needed to redo the signature cards. We will be redoing them again, once we get the interim city secretary. But in the meantime, we have proposed these signatures, the mayor, the mayor pro Tim, the city administrator, the finance director, and the acting city secretary. One of the changes in this action from in the past is that we used to have also an additional council member as a signatory, but since we've had this last resolution for signatories, we have instituted electronic signatures on all of our vendor payments. And so those are affixed at the time through our software system at the time that we do those checks. So it's very rare that we're without signatories. We're without signatories to be able to use the electronic signatures right now, because the prior mayor was on that, that signature plate. So we just needed to get our signatories updated. We will update them as other positions are made, either on an interim basis or a permanent basis for the city secretary. But this will get us covered with the current mayor and council and the acting city secretary. The, the bank would, would not allow to not have the city secretary's signature, because they do need a corporate secretary. That's one of the reasons we wanted to go ahead and appoint an acting this evening. And so the signatures are there for your consideration.
Any questions, point of discussion in the council?
Mayor Holsey?
Yes.
I move to approve resolution zero zero eight dash twenty twenty one, approving and authorizing signatures of the City of Haslett Bank Accounts.
Motion is made by Councilman Nahera to approve resolution zero zero eight dash two zero two one. Is there a second?
This is Councilmember Clark, I'll second.
Councilmember Clark, seconds. Is there any discussion? Now I call for the vote. Mayor Pro Tim Morrow?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark?
Aye.
Councilmember Nahera?
Aye.
Councilmember Ricketts?
Aye.
Councilmember Rob?
Aye.
Motion passes five oh. And if we could move to item eight F? Eight F is consider and act on resolution zero zero nine dash twenty one, suggesting opposition to Fort Worth zoning case ZC dash twenty one dash oh three four, located adjacent to Haslett. I requested this item be placed on here. Do we have a, we have a map that shows this area, correct? Okay, council, this is three hundred and twenty seven acres, I believe, thereabouts, nominal. It is three hundred seventy two acres. And taking approximately, using the net available development area, I used seventy five percent of this. The applicant to Fort Worth is proposing five thousand square foot lots. Using seventy five percent of this, you could put approximately twenty four homes, twenty four hundred, two thousand four hundred homes on this development, or five thousand square foot lots. Using the current census recommendation of three inhabitants per home, that puts around seventy four hundred inhabitants in this three hundred acre area, and it's approximately five thousand additional cars. Highly, highly, very dense. Given that Blue Mound Road is overburdened now, I want to go to Fort Worth urging them to reconsider this, to maybe even consider half acre lots. If you look, our property or within our city, it abuts our city limits, it abuts the, on the east side is John Day Road that we recently built. The Ashmore Farms, all of those lots right there are minimum half acres, and some of them appear to be two and three acres in some places. Across the, to the south of this development, again, is Fort Worth ETJ. But in their original document, it stated it was compatible with the zoning in that immediate area, which I would need, you know, like to inform them that it's not. Those lots in Lonesome Dove are one acre lots. So this is a, kind of a misplaced development for this area, as far as being, I'll say, complementary to the area, but more important is the high density and the, I'll say, safety concerns, welfare concerns, that would come along replacing, I mean, almost another five thousand automobiles into this area, and around seventy four hundred people. So that's why I was asking for this resolution, so we could send it to Fort Worth, expressing our concerns. And I know that Ms. Hillborn wanted to speak to this item. Is that correct, Ms. Hillborn?
Yes, that's correct.
Please go ahead.
Thanks, Mayor and council. I am against approving this resolution, and I'm asking the city council to turn down this resolution for two reasons. One, it will have a negative short term effect on our working relationship with the City of Fort Worth. Asking a sister city to deny a property owner within their city to use the property within the city ordinances seems highly irregular, irregular, excuse me. And Haslett would be appalled if Fort Worth sent such a resolution to us. Also, number two, I believe this will have a negative long term effect on our working and essential relationship with the city, which completely surrounds Haslett, with which we have ongoing pri- we have ongoing projects, including the TRE sewer line, which is going to service our La Terra subdivision and help with our overall city sewer project, of which Fort Worth is bearing the majority of the cost. The easement that the city of Fort Worth gave to the city of Hasslet for Hasslet Parkway, which allows us to connect this very important development and roadway to I thirty-five W. Uh, their, uh, Fort Worth willingness to put the Avondale Hasslet Road, uh, extension on their end of, of the road where Hasslet Parkway becomes Avondale Hasslet again in Fort Worth on their next bond election. Uh, after years of negotiations, we were able to work with the city of Fort Worth to take over the improvement of Bond Ranch Road, which before that time was split between three governing entities, and was going to be a very expensive project for Hasslet to undertake. Uh, also, talking about Blue Mound Road being overtaxed, uh, probably the only way that Blue Mound Road will ever be improved on the Fort Worth side is through development. And finally, the city of Hasslet purchase, purchases one hundred percent of its water from the city of Fort Worth. So you see, council, we have a, a, an essential and important working relationship with this city, and there is no reason why our city can't sit down with them and talk about this issue, but, uh, approving this public resolution and presenting it to them, uh, to me is just, uh, not something that our city should do, not in our best interest now or in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Hillborn. Uh, I would like to make a point of correction. Uh, our water comes from, uh, North Texas Regional Water District. That's where we get our water from. City of Fort Worth is the administrator of it. We don't purchase it per se from Fort Worth, so, uh, so they, they are just a contracted administrator for North Texas Regional Water District. The other is, it's not highly irregular for one city to comment to the other. Uh, as a matter of, of working relationship, city of Fort Worth didn't notify us that this was going in. We found out about it by accident. Uh, that's another point. Uh, I, as a citizen prior to the election, um, went to the city of Fort Worth council meeting when this item was up for their approval, and I addressed this very, uh, issue noting the dense population, the addition of the cars, the overloading of one, or, uh, uh, Blue Mound Road and the consequences on one fifty-six, and the councilman, Dennis Shingleton at that time, since then, you know, he did not rerun, but he was, had great concerns about it as well, and requested that his council send it back to the zoning commission, of which they did, and that's where it's at. It's back at their zoning commis, uh, commission to reconsider this. So the resolution is a means by which that you give your mayor the authority to go speak to this city, uh, about this item, and this is the only way that I can get permission to do so. Uh, to make it, uh, Fort Worth is not going to think that this is, uh, we're trying to give them a black eye, not in any way at all. Uh, as I understand, uh, that's, uh, probably the incoming, uh, councilman, uh, for this district seven is just as concerned. Uh, it's well noted that, uh, these council people have addressed this in the Star Telegram, public articles, so we're not doing anything that's, uh, extraordinary or out of, uh, tune with what any other city would do. We owe it a responsibility to our citizens to address neighboring entities that do have an effect on us, and that's why have a grave effect on us. So that's, uh, that's my response.
This is Mayor Pro Temp, I'm, I'm, I didn't realize that, I hadn't done the, the research on the Star Telegram, I, I would like to do some more research with follow-up articles, um, the minutes from the, I didn't know you went to the city council mi, meeting in Fort Worth. What was your reasoning for pushing it back to zoning? Had they done a traffic study, um, or, that's all information that would have been nice for me to, to go through, so.
The, uh, Councilman Shingleton, um, requested that, uh, they would like to see other zoning, not, not to have such high density, has tried to pursue other methods. So this would be merely to, uh, support his own comment.
Yeah, and I would like to point out that there's, there has been other neighborhoods that have been, you know, stopped because of that, because of the high-density issue that we have in this entire area. Um, you know, I, I agree, we have to work with our sister cities, but they also have to work with us. It, it, and like, uh, Mayor Halsey said, this is in the best interest of not only us, but also the citizens of Fort Worth. Um, to say that we need them more than they need us, I, I don't think that's correct. I think we need each other, and to go forward with this plan is just n, not in our best interest. So with, with that said, I, I, I move for resolution number zero zero nine dash twenty twenty-one, expressing opposition to Fort Worth zoning case CZ dash twenty-one dash zero three four located adjacent to Hasslet to be approved.
Motion has been made to, uh, approve resolution zero zero nine dash two zero two one, is there a second? There is no second?
Mayor Halsey, this is Councilman Ricketts, I'll second. I do want to also add to the discussion though, too. I do agree with you, Mayor Halsey, on the aspect, it does not hurt to actually have these conversations with the city of Fort Worth, and if this is the only way that we can move forward to actually have those conversations, or respectively you have these conversations with Fort Worth, I think we ought to support it, at least to have the conversations.
This is the only way I can officially go have these conversations, because I represent the council and the people, and I can't go have a conversation to shut, you know, to try to get, uh, another entity to change their mind unless I know that's the, I have the support of the council. That's the reason for these resolutions, or one, a reason for this resolution. So a motion, uh, made by, uh, Councilman Nahera to approve, seconded by Councilman Ricketts. Any further discussion?
This is Mayor Pro Temp, um, so when, so let's say that it gets approved in Fort Worth, um, accepts our resolution, can they legally deny a property owner to not be able to change their, I mean, can that be something they actually are legally able to do to their, to the person that's requesting to go from ag to, um, residential?
Yes, they can. They can, uh, uh, well, they can as long as it's within their zoning or, uh, but now, again, uh, Fort Worth Councilman Shingleton sent it back and, and instructed the, uh, zoning commission to work with this owner to see a different zoning, different lot sizes, larger lot sizes, maybe in the mix with these five thousand square foot, uh, lot sizes. So it is within their purview to, to work with this owner and change this, uh, density.
Okay, but my question was, can they, if, if it's in their zoning ordinance, he, he or she, whoever has the property, doesn't have to legally change it, they can just suggest it?
Who, who, they being the city of Fort Worth?
Correct.
They can, so I, I have not read their zoning ordinance, that is a detail that would be left to them. Uh, if they did not have that capability, I'm sure Councilman Shingleton of Fort Worth would have never sent it back. Uh, if it was in full compliance with everything, if they did not have any alternative. This was a proposal by a landowner for this, uh, um, zoning density, uh, of five thousand square foot lots. So evidently that, uh, Fort Worth has some leeway into finding this density. But this, our resolution does not, uh, it's not binding at all. It just opens the door that you're allowing us to, our, our city to have conversation with Fort Worth about this item.
I guess my concern is the conversation, I don't, yeah, I, what the, what the endgame is with our, basically our only neighbor or so, but that, you answered my question. Um, who, who, Dennis Shingleton is no longer on city council, correct? Do you know who, what place he was, just off the top of your head? I can look it up.
He was District Seven.
Place, District Seven, that's right, that's, that's correct, thank you.
Any other conversation?
Just want to make one last comment. Um, this is just to express our opposition, they're basically, you know, we, we can't do anything about the, what's already been passed or has not been passed in Fort Worth, it's just basically saying this is our opposition to this project. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And, and I don't think by doing this will, it would hurt our relationship with Fort Worth, just, just for the council members to consider.
Uh, no, it would not. They, I'm sure they get this probably regularly with all the cities that, other cities that they encompass and, and, uh, share boundaries with. Any other questions, any other concerns? If not, I'll call for the vote. Mayor Pro Temp, aye.
No.
No.
Councilmember Hector?
Aye.
I'm sorry. Councilmember Rickett?
Aye.
Councilmember Rob?
I'm, I'm gonna vote no for, uh, the reasons stated earlier by Ms. Hillborn.
Uh, motion fails. Three to zero, or three to two, excuse me, motion fails three to two. All right, thank you, council. Okay, let's go to item G, accept resignation of Travis Adonazio as city engineer. Travis has resigned, gave his letter of resignation to the city. Uh, council member, or excuse me, uh, Ms. Hillborn, I understand you wanted to speak to this item.
Uh, no, Mayor Halsey, it's eight H.
Eight H.
I, I believe we're on eight G, am I, am I, am I following along correctly?
I've gotten a list that you had, you had three items you wanted, it was F, G, and H. Is that incorrect?
It was F, H, and J.
F, H, and J, very good.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, council, so the, uh, we must, uh, uh, accept, uh, his resignation, I don't know that there's an alternative not to accept it, but, uh, uh, we can't force, we don't have forced labor, uh, and, uh, Travis is moving on, so, uh, we can take a motion?
This is Mayor Pro Temp, I make a motion to accept Travis Adonazio's submitted, um, written resignation as city engineer.
A motion has been made by Mayor Pro Temp to accept resignation, is there a second?
This is Councilmember Ricketts, I'll second.
And Councilmember Ricketts accept, or second, is there a, any discussion? Uh, call for the vote. Mayor Pro Temp?
Aye.
Councilmember Ricketts?
Aye.
Councilmember Nahera?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark? Councilmember Rob?
Uh, regretfully, I.
Uh, motion passes five to zero. Hey, let's go to item eight. Uh, council, and maybe, not familiar with it, I can get you the exact section number, but, uh, city engineer is, uh, one of the positions mandated by state statute, and the statute, uh, states that when any of these positions, such as city engineer, city attorney, city secretary, the treasurer, uh, uh, et cetera, are open, that the mayor shall appoint, uh, that position with the council's, uh, approval, with their concurrence. And, uh, given that, since Travis did resign, I reached out to Belchif and Associates, who was formerly Hasslet's, uh, city engineer from, I believe nineteen ninety-nine to two thousand fourteen, did I get those dates correct? Anyway, so, uh, I'm submitting to you for your, uh, your approval, is, uh, Belchif and Associates, uh, he's a known commodity, served the city well in the past, uh, he's a very good engineer, very good firm, uh, their expertise is small-town, uh, municipal engineering, uh, such as ours, um, so I'll, uh, I'll turn it over to you, council, at this point, um, or should I ask Mr. Belchif? He's online here, I believe, Mr. Belchif, are you here?
Yes, I am.
There he is. Uh, council, Mr. Belchif is online, would you like to make a presentation of yourself, Mr. Belchif, in your firm?
Uh, I could, council, um, of course, my name is George Belchif, I, I've met several of you before, we were city engineer for several years, uh, we'd be more than happy and, and, uh, um, feel very comfortable coming back to try to help that city of Hasslet through its period of growth, and we're open for any kind of questions you might have, and, and of course, we'd be honored to, to help the city.
I, I've got a question, Mr. Belchif.
Mr. Mayor Halsey, would it be appropriate for me to speak now, or do you want me to wait till after discussion?
Uh, well, Councilman Nahera was speaking when you, when you spoke up, I'd like to let him finish.
Yes, I just, just have a question for Mr. Belchif.
After the council's had discussion.
Can you give us just a, a little bit of background of, of other cities that you're working with a similar size as Hasslet?
We're, uh, we serve as city engineer for, I believe, the city of Aurora, Boyd, uh, we, Lake City's Municipal Utility Authority, the town of Ponder, Dish, and we do some projects for other cities, but all, that's, that's all we do, we, we specialize in being a city engineer for smaller towns, uh, namely, all of those are general law cities except for Lake City's Municipal Utility Authority, which is a water and sewer authority over in, um, Denton County.
And how many people do you have on staff?
Currently, we have six, uh, six full-time and, and two part-time.
Okay.
This is Mayor Pro Temp, hello, Mr. Belchif, happy to see you again. Um, one of the questions I had on the, the draft, and I was wanting Um, one of the questions I had on the, the draft, and I just wanted to make sure I have, I read it correctly, is on the schedule towards the bottom, it says this is outlined as an ongoing and as needed basis for a period of five years. And it says with automatic annual extensions unless determined otherwise, so I want to just make sure I have the terms correct, so five years, is that correct?
Uh, that's correct, but there's also a clause in there that says you can terminate us pretty much anytime with thirty-day notice.
Okay, thank you. I had another question. It, it said, um, well, I guess this might be a question for the, the mayor or, I don't know, Rob. Um, who exactly would, would you report to as the, as a, we haven't had with the in-house for, I don't know how many years now, and we haven't gone back to contract in a while, who would you directly report to as your supervisor?
Uh, I'll return, I'll refer that back to Mayor Halsey.
Well, the, uh, in the, um, ethics policy that, uh, you have that's most recently passed, it shows that the chain is to the mayor. So that's according to the structure in your ethics policy. Now, I know that functionally, uh, it'd be Jim Quinn and I, uh, as he, uh, runs, uh, day-to-day, hour-to-hour, and keeps with, uh, you know, the details of the, uh, city hall running. Uh, but according to the ethics policy, um, uh, structure, it, uh, it shows all the officers reporting to the mayor and council. Better put it that way, mayor and council is who he would report to.
Hey, thank you. I'll keep asking questions, sorry, let someone else want to take a turn.
Yeah, this is, uh, councilmember Rob. I'm looking at the work chart for September twenty sixteen. Are you, I'm not sure if that's the latest or not, but it shows, uh, Department of Engineering and Public Works reports, reports to the city administrator. And of course, then the city administrator reports to city council and the mayor. So, uh, you know, this would be...
Oh, that's fine, you know, there are two, there are two different documents out there that, uh, show, um, a little different, uh, org charts, and I'll identify those and, uh, council could pick one or the other. Uh, functionally, they're the same. Uh, ultimately, uh, all employees report to the mayor and council, the governing body. But, I mean, that's fine, the designate, uh, his, uh, reporting is to Mr. Quinn, the city administrator.
This is councilmember Rob, again, okay, thank you for that clarification. Uh, first, uh, George, hello. Nice, nice to see you again. Mr. Belchif and his firm did excellent work for the city in the past, I don't have any problem with that at all. The issue that, that came up about five years ago was, uh, you know, we found that we were paying, uh, Mr. Belchif's firm quite a bit of money. I mean, i- if you look in this, uh, agreement, we're talking about ninety thousand a year just as a retainer. Uh, and then, uh, all, all projects are all real engineering work done, would be special charges that would be on top of that. You know, and so, uh, we looked at bringing the, uh, city engineer position, uh, in-house, uh, for the only reason was to serve, was, was to, uh, was, um, improve our costs, our, uh, our savings for taxpayer money by bringing that in-house. And I, I'm not, I don't have a figure of how much we saved, but it's probably been more than a hundred thousand dollars, uh, which is quite a bit. Um, you know, we still occasionally had to go out for, uh, things that are, go out for, uh, outside for some, uh, engineering functions, uh, that we weren't, that our engineer wasn't qualified to do. So I think we need to have a discussion on, okay, how, how is, how is the best way to fill this vacancy? Uh, do we fill it in-house? Uh, do we fill it with an agency? You know, we haven't had those discussions. You know, unless there is a compelling need to get this done, um, you know, in a, a short period of time, I would feel more comfortable, uh, approving this if we had considered what our alternatives were.
Uh, yeah, uh, councilman Rob is that our alternatives are, uh, just as you said, to consider hiring in-house, uh, an engineer in-house, or go with consulting firm. Essentially two choices there. I would like to speak to that, and that, uh, you know, in-house engineering, we'd be hiring one person. And they are their, uh, it's a one-man show, as they say. When, uh, the engineering comes into play, you know, projects fail for, uh, fail for three reasons. Uh, bad engineering, bad construction, or a combination of both engineering and construction. When you have your own in-house engineer, you have no recourse. You eat that project and do it again. And that involves re-engineering and new construction, and the construction cost. On the other side, if you have a consultant, they are liable for their work. The city doesn't eat that. Or the consequences of construction do, based off bad engineering. I see that as an advantage. As a, seeing an engineer in-house, they are by themselves. They don't have any partner engineers or in their firm, there is no firm, to speak, um, about solutions. Best ways to go, they have nobody to bounce these ideas off, uh, as when you have a consulting firm, they do have more than one engineer, generally two or three at least. And then they have other personnel who are less costly to perform other tasks such as drafting or design, and those things of that nature. So, uh, I think you get a better engineering product out of a firm than what you do as a single office, a single person working for the city. Uh, another item, uh, there's nobody in this city, um, in our government anyway, that's qualified to interview a city engineer, a single person for a full-time employee. Uh, you know, so, uh, whatever call we make is what we live with. I don't know of any civil engineers on the council or in our administration that we could go to and ask the proper questions of a civil engineer. I mean, the best we can do is read a resume and bring them in and interview them face-to-face, but getting into the technical depths of it, of which count, uh, that's just something we won't be able to get into. The other is, I would speak to very specifically with Belchif and Associates, is that, uh, they are known, you know, interfacing with the public is a very important aspect. And, uh, we don't know what those people's skills are until after you hire them. Uh, that's another thing. Uh, I think as, uh, councilman Rob said, uh, Belchif and Associates has, I mean, they're a known commodity. Uh, we know their work, uh, as far as the city goes, and the, uh, uh, and their interaction with our residents, uh, it's, uh, it's a quality product. I'm gonna say you get what you pay for. So the, this monthly retainer of seventy-seven hundred a month, uh, it looks, yeah, more expensive as to compare to a full-time employee, but you're getting much more than that, you're getting the depth of the full office as well. I'd like Mr. Quinn to make some comments, because he and I have discussed this and we've looked at that. Jim.
There's seven thousand a month, not seven hundred, just want to correct that one little zero added.
Seventy-seven hundred?
Seven thousand five hundred and fifty, correct?
Yes.
Okay, got it.
Well, um, originally, the, uh, the contract was ended because of the, the growing costs of engineering firm. Uh, I'm more comfortable now because we have in-house staff that can take over some of the planning and development and subdivision regulations review. So I'd be amenable, uh, to this contract more than I would have been before.
This is Mayor Pro Tim Morrow, I had a couple of questions on, um, you said no recourse. Well, well, let me, I'm gonna start with the most recent. So who interviewed Travis, if we have nobody that's qualified, I mean Travis has done an incredible job, I was looking at the, at his last, um, engineering report in March, and over, he had forty-seven projects, two thousand sixteen, twenty twenty-one, so who did interview him? Because I wasn't here then.
It was a panel of staff, there was no, as Mayor Halsey described, a technical engineer asking questions. Uh, but it was, it was a, a panel interview.
Okay, my other question is about the no, thank you, the no recourse, you're saying like if he does something bad engineering, you called it, or maybe does a bid wrong, is TML, do we not have insurance through TML that would cover that, or correct me if I'm wrong on that?
We do have errors and omission insurance, uh, through TML, I don't know what the aggregate is.
Okay, and then my last question is just, you mentioned, um, you're right, if we hired somebody new, we wouldn't know about their interpersonal skills. Um, but I wanted to go back to the contract, we, we are looking at a person being in the office one day, one trip per week, is that correct? At the scope of services, number one, generally one trip per week.
Well, it's not that they're in the office, the way they, uh, business was conducted, uh, in prior years, George, you want to describe that?
Well, we, we didn't have an office at the city of Haslet, we kept our own office. We were available as needed essentially on a, on a, uh, basis that required us to come and visit, um, pretty regularly. You know, some typically on, just a general visit's gonna average one time a week, but you add up all the other meetings and the other time involved by telephone, by emails, by, um, other methods of, of meeting and correspondence, it's, it, it will be quite a bit more.
You know, I wanted to make a point, this, in the prior years, uh, when, uh, George was working for, uh, Haslet, as, uh, Mr. Quinn has noted, uh, but George was filling a lot of other gaps, like plan reviews, thanks a lot of what, uh, uh, Wes Morrison, uh, and getting into other areas well beyond engineering, and that was all because we didn't have that expertise. But Jim has built a good team that has taken a lot of that, uh, into other hands, that, uh, that, uh, Mr. Belchif would not, uh, have to be involved in. I think that's the basis of, uh, Jim's, uh, comment, the, you know, the cost control is, it would be much, much better than, uh, what we had before.
This is Mayor Pro Tim Morrow, I guess my just biggest concern is changing the way we do business, and that's something we all decided, the council we want to do, then, um, and that's what we do, but having someone in-house and is able to be here, the special services, it kind of gives me a little bit of pause with, does that mean just anything at all that's not a basic service, something that, um, and I guess the cost of the ninety thousand dollars a year, just the retainer, without anything else included, that just gives me a little bit of, of pause physically, um, being responsible, so that's, that's where I am on it. I don't know if this is something that we want more information on. Right now.
Ma, I think that, uh, George and Mr. Quinn can address that now.
Okay, so what was the cost of the last time we had Mr. Belchif, um, per year versus I know what Travis's annual salary was?
Well, I just, I don't have numbers available, but I think bef, when we, when we were there before, um, you were just in the process of beginning to add staff to cover a lot of the things that we, we won't be doing, I, I understand Wes will handle, uh, a lot of the in-house stuff. And we, we provide a technical engineering support at this point. So, um, back several years ago, I know the cost was getting much higher than, than, uh, probably more than it is now, but you had the same situation, you had general services, and then you had essentially project. Projects, um, you're doing that now, if you, if you're designing, if you had, need somebody to design a street replacement or reconstruction, then you're typically paying somebody out, outside to do that. So we're just trying to do that on a more efficient basis, I'm more familiar with the city of Haslet.
Mr. Quinn, can you, uh, address some of this as well, from your perspective?
Right, um, prior years, um, um, George Belchif used to be involved in the public works department. He used to do all the subdivision, uh, applications and plans to review. Uh, there are, there are certain things that have changed that should help us, uh, maintain, uh, more efficient costs for services. And there are things in there that we don't, we don't have, we, there has a sign, so if we don't assign the firm the work, then they don't get paid, so that's, that's the way I look at it.
I, I just want to comment right quick, um, I, I read through this thing, and I think the best thing I like about it is we can opt out with a thirty-day notice. So if we go into this and we decide this is not for us, and we want to have somebody on a permanent basis, we can always do that. So it's, it is maybe a five-year contract, but it says clearly that we can opt out within thirty days. And with Mr. Quinn's, you know, recommendation that we go through with this, I, you know, I, I move that we approve Belchif and Associates to provide city engineer services for the city of Haslet.
Pardon me, pardon me, uh, I have not been given the opportunity to speak.
There's a motion on, there's a motion on the floor.
Mr. Halsey, I have not been given an opportunity to speak.
I will give you an opportunity to speak, but I've got to, a motion on the floor, let me take the motion in the second, then you'll get your opportunity.
I requested the opportunity to speak previously, before Mr. Nahara made his motion.
Well, you requested that while he was speaking.
I requested it at the top of the item.
You're going to get your opportunity to speak. I've got to follow Robert's rule of order. There's a motion on the floor. And, um, sorry, that, uh, councilman Nahara's made a motion to approve the, uh, Belchif and Associates as a city engineer, is there a second? And remember, we'll go into discussion after the second. There is no second, so the motion dies. Well, thank you, Mr. Belchif, appreciate it.
I still have an opportunity to speak, Mr. Halsey.
Yes, ma'am, go ahead and speak.
Thank you, sir. Uh, I, I guess a lot of what I was gonna say is a moot point at this point. Um, thank you, council, for not seconding this motion, because I was gonna ask you not to approve it. Uh, before I go through that, I would like to say hello to George Belchif, good to see you again. My objection is to the, uh, process here. Uh, by presenting a, a five-year contract with an engineering firm, the mayor is asking the council to change the way the city does business. And I think some of the discussion tonight that took place, uh, was not under this agenda item as written, but however, I think there should be a discussion, agenda item, to discuss some of the points that were brought up. Uh, this, this contract is a, a letter from... Uh, this, this contract is a, a letter from the engineering firm to the mayor of Haslett. There's no provisions in this contract for who will direct this engineering firm. And right now, our city administrator directs our engineering department. And without that being clearly, uh, discussed in this document, then there's no, uh, there's no clear direction for our city administrator to do his job. It undermines our city procedures and the authority and responsibility of the city administrator. So I, as a, um, in fact, I, I should turn on my camera. I apologize. I meant to. There I am. Uh, as, uh, Mayor Protem Morrow said, you know, you know, maybe you do want to change the way the city does business. But I don't think, uh, that's what is being transparently shown right now. Uh, in fact, what we have is a, is a, is a contract that overrides city policies without a proper discussion about changing city policies. So, uh, this is, this motion has failed, um, but I think in the future, the council should be able to, to reevaluate this policy. Because right now, the question was, what do we do going forward? Well, the council doesn't have to do anything. Mr. Quinn already has the authority to fill this position. And he should immediately fill this position with the best qualified person he can find. And then the city moves forward. So, uh, the fact that this was being presented as an alternative, when actually, it's actually a change in policy. So, uh, thank you for, thank you again for, uh, not approving this. And, uh, please, uh, please instruct, uh, the city administrator to go ahead with his business the way he should and, uh, replace, uh, a, a very capable young man who has gone on to another, another city to do good work for them. But let's find another one, uh, under Mr. Quinn's direction. Thank you very much. Thanks for the opportunity to speak.
Well, thank you, Ms. Hillborn. I appreciate the words.
Mayor Halsey, this is Councilmember Ricketts.
Excuse me, there's a slight error there in that that's not what state statute says, regardless of what the policy says. Uh, I, I understand that some of you might not like that. But I would, I would urge you to read the local government code with regard to when a position opens up, such as the city engineer, and what that process is. It's very clear as to what happens. Um, that the, the mayor appoints and, uh, the council must approve, you know, whatever the, uh, mayor is bringing forth. And that's, this is the process here. I brought forth a candidate for the, uh, city engineer and, uh, council has denied it. And we'll go back and, uh, we'll find another approach, uh, or another candidate. But, um, Mr. Quinn has read that statute and is aware of as well. Uh, the, excuse me, as, I'm, as, excuse me, because when, when, uh, um, those candidates, um, uh, I have no choice but to follow that process and that statute. And who was speaking up there?
Mayor Halsey, this is Councilmember Ricketts. There's a lot, um, there's a lot of information in this proposal, as you well saw with, um, and I know that there's a motion and the motion that was currently on has been denied. I would like to see if we could actually move to make a new motion to table this, to actually address each one of these and actually look to see what we did in-house, what was out on special projects, address some of these considerations that, uh, Mayor Protem Morrow has brought up, to actually see exactly what there is in cost-wise, what there is. I do see, again, I work for a very major engineering corporation, and one single engineer, you are very limited. I see good things in this. I think we ought to table this, and I make motion to table this and move forward to actually look at these and look at these more on an individual basis.
Well, it's already been denied because there's no second. The mo, that motion has, that motion only.
That motion was denied.
Correct.
I was making a, a new motion.
New, new motion to, new motion to table this for, uh, further discussion or what?
For further discussion and to address each of these bullets that we have in this proposal as what, so we have a better understanding of what was done in-house versus what we would still actually go out and I look for surveyors. I, do we actually do our own surveying? I saw that in here. Or do we actually go out with someone else? I think there's a lot of stuff in this proposal that we could actually get a better understanding of the proposal itself, too.
I understand. Uh, council, I would say this, we do have need for a engineer from somewhere uh, that's coming up immediately, uh, with the projects that we have going with the road projects, um, um, both, uh, um, the bridge replacement, uh, our engineer is required to look at that, as well as Haslett Parkway, our engineer is required to look at that. Of course, we have contracts with other engineering firms. I suspect that we could go out and ask them to fill those needs. Uh, is that, uh, Jim, do you, uh, see it that way? We could do that?
I have a question as well as Mayor Protem Mar, but I, do we want, we have a motion. Do we want to go with this and then we just talk about it?
There's a motion to, uh, table this for further discussion. Is there a second?
I second that.
Uh, Councilman Nahara, second. Any other discussion?
Well, that was my discussion was the question you just asked was, um, I, I noticed on, um, Travis's um, letter or on that, that item, that it said the public works director would be the one that's taking over in, in the interim. Is that, so do we have someone that is able to make those decisions and move forward the projects we have?
No, I, as far as engineering, Mr. Rogers would not be, uh, taking, you know, engineering duties. He can answer questions and, and look and, and inspect certain items, but he'll, he'll let us know where he needs assistance from an engineer. But in some ongoing road deals, Mr. Rogers can take care of that. Uh, not all of it. He'll need the assistance of an engineer. But we have other consultants, so I think we got two other consulting engineers firms that we have out there now.
And so this is, uh, Councilmember Rob. Uh, if, if we decide, uh, that, uh, this is the route we want to pick after, and I, I support Councilman Ricketts', uh, uh, motion, by the way, that we look at each individual ones of these. But I would also like to have a choice. I would like to, you know, put this out, whatever we come, whatever list of services we we put it out for, so that we, and then, uh, see what we get back.
A choice of what? Choice of different firms?
Yes, I'm, I'm sure there are other firms that are engaged in this kind of services. So I'd like to hear what they request.
Okay, well, there's a motion and a, a second to, uh, table this.
Mr. Halsey, may I ask a question before you call for the vote? This is Patricia Hillborn. Just a question.
Go ahead.
Okay, so if you table this, then that means it does not come up for discussion again until it's taken off the table. So, uh, in the, in the meantime, can the council still have an agenda item that discusses whether they want to continue the current policy of having, uh, the, uh, city administrator hire the engineer and let's get back to business? Or is that going to be tied up along with this item under the table? Maybe this is a question for our city attorney?
This, uh, let me attempt to answer it, is the first motion made on this fail. Started accepting, sounds a dead motion. So the second motion here is to table this item to address these various, uh, points. And, uh, the, so during the, uh, I, I would ask the motion, um, Councilmember Rickett, is your, uh, intent is that staff provide an explanation of each one of these or that you submit your questions to, uh, Mr. Quinn? And, uh, we, uh, answer these questions. Is there any intent of how this is going to occur?
Uh, my biggest intent on this is to make sure that, again, what I, what I've heard just recently is that we only went away from Mr. Belchuk five years ago to Travis. Um, again, I think Mayor Protem Morrow brought up some great points on the aspect, we need to take a look at this and what is this costing us? We have a fiduciary responsibility to the citizens of Haslett. But we actually also, again, have a lot of special projects. I'm looking through this and I'm seeing a lot of special services that we would actually be getting additional cost for that would be over and above Mr. Belchuk that looks like he's provided within, within here. So I see that there's a lot of stuff in here that we need to actually break down. I don't know how, if, if tabling it would be the right thing. I do think there should be further discussion. Um, I would, my biggest thing is I don't want to throw the baby out with the bathwater. We need to look at this. We need to look at other options like, um, Mayor, or, not Mayor, sorry. Going back to Councilmember Rob said, we have to look at other things that, in this, to make sure we're making the proper decision for Haslett. And I don't think, I, I don't think by just throwing this out is the right decision. Um, I don't think, I think by looking at other options and making sure we're making the best decision is the best option. So if that means tabling it for further discussion, I move to table it for further discussion.
I would, uh, maybe I suggest that you amend your motion to table it for the.
Just want to add one thing right quick to, to all of this. I, I think we should also look at the cost of Travis's salary, plus all the outside contracts that we had to do w- with other engineering services to see, do a cost analysis. What it's going to cost us for Mr. Belchuk and Associates versus Travis's salary, plus any additional items that we had to pay outside of his salary.
Now, Mr. Quinn should be able to gather that.
Mayor, Mayor, this is Rob Alabon. Uh, Councilmember Rob asked a question that I'd like to respond to if that's okay with you, sir.
Please, go ahead.
Um, just so everybody's clear, uh, Councilman Rob, you asked about, uh, trying to get, you know, you're kind of breaking up a little on me, but I thought you said basically go out for bids, let's see what other services would cost. And I just want to, uh, mind council that hiring of an engineer falls under the Professional Services Determin Act. What that requires is, city make a determination of who you believe is the most qualified per, and you go negotiate a contract. And, uh, if you can't reach an agreement with them, then you can move on to the next most qualified. So way a municipality contracts with is you would go out, request for qualifications, have, respond to that, so you analyze who you think is the most qualified. Don't have to go through that process. Know who you believe is the most qualified, jump right to negotiating. That, but, but you can't go out for bids and accept what you know is responsible.
Mr. Alabon, you're, you're, you're cutting it out. I don't know if everyone's having the same problem, but I can't hear much of what you're saying.
Yeah, I think what he was saying is, uh, Councilmember Rob, can you hear us? Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, there is.
What he, what, what, uh, Bob Alabon was saying is, we cannot go out to bid for these kind of services. Professional services, you don't go out to bid. You can go solicit and get people to turn in their qualifications and use to select the most qualified. And you might rank them one, two, and three. And then you can go interview with them or try to negotiate a contract. But they won't be able to, you know, competitively, I'll do it for this much per month, you know, here's my rates. You won't see any of that. So it'd be one at a time. You try to negotiate particular rates and, uh, and, uh, retainer fees if we're going with a firm. And, uh, that's how that process would go. It's just, uh, law does not allow, uh, bidding, um, professional services.
So this is Mayor Protem Morrow. So, Mr. Alabon, is that, then is tabling what we need to do to, to get everything that that, um, they're talking about, which I think is a great idea? Is that the right?
You can, you can certainly do that. Um, motion, motion was made to approve that failed for a lack of a second. So the item, what for a motion to table, uh, you know, that, that item is could be done tonight with direction on how the council wants to proceed, or it actually could be tabled direction on how you want to proceed. So that, that's up to y'all as to how you want to handle that.
I would suggest this, let me suggest this, is to um, table the item until, uh, the next city council meeting. And then, uh, each of you submit what questions or how you like to process, such as, I heard, you know, to get a, uh, incorporating the salaries of the other staff that would do the duties that Belchuk and Associates used to do. And then also the engineering and also bring in the aspect of the other consulting firms that we have contracts with now doing different projects. And try to, uh, have a comparative, uh, uh, something, you know, apples to apples, so you can look at it financially. Um, Jim, Mr. Quinn, is that something that we can do and you can furnish?
It's, it's, it's a pretty tall order for ten days between the council meeting.
Uh, should we make it a month? I would not, so we have an idea when to bring it back. So.
I would say the first meeting in July would be sufficient. I, uh, uh, if you want a thorough analysis and you want something that everybody can see and compare, uh, prices and, and fees and et cetera, I would, I would need at least, you know, a month to do that. Ten days would be just, you would probably get a product that probably wouldn't be as thorough as it, it should be.
All right, uh, I believe, Mr. Ricketts, you're the one that made the motion. You, you might consider amending your motion to table and, uh, to, uh, to, and bring it back on the, um, first meeting in July?
Your mic is off.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Uh, Mayor Halsey, I'd like to amend my motion. I just then would like to make, move to table this proposal and to address questions to the city staff and, uh, retable, bring it back onto the agenda for the first week of, first meeting in July.
Okay, a motion has been made to table this and return this item back to the, uh, first city council meeting in July. And so that, uh, uh, council questions can be addressed and analysis performed, as I understand your motion. Is that captured the essence of it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Second.
I second that.
Okay. Okay, it's, uh, amended, uh, and the second is accepted amendment. Is there any further discussion? And then I call for the vote. Mayor Protem Morrow?
Aye.
Councilwoman, or it's Councilmember Clark?
Aye.
Councilmember Ricketts?
Aye.
Councilmember Nahara?
Aye.
Councilmember Rob?
Aye.
Okay, the motion passes five-zero, tabled, and will return on the agenda first week in July. Uh, council, be sure to submit your items. Any, uh, to the city administrator. Uh, thank you, Mr. Belchuk.
Thank you.
Item eight I is considered an act on appointment of a council member to the city standing PID subcommittee. I believe, uh, Mr. Alabon, you had this on the agenda. You want to address this topic?
Yes, sir, I'd be happy to. I've scooted up closer to my screen. Can y'all hear me or is it breaking up?
No, we're good.
Okay, I apologize. You're gonna have to look at my bald head, I think, because I'm close to the screen. Uh, council, you will recall that, um, you have appointed a standing subcommittee to meet with developers, um, and their lawyers and their development folks. When a new public improvement district is requested in the city, or, or. or, or issues that come up with regard to administration of your ongoing, uh, PID districts, public improvement districts that have previously been approved. Um, the current subcommittee members consist of the PID consultant that the city has, has hired, P3 Works, city attorney, uh, relevant staff members, and there were two council members on this subcommittee. Uh, Councilmember Rob and past Councilmember Patricia Hillborn. Um, with the change on the council, uh, her position is open. And we do have some requests coming forward that are going to require, uh, this subcommittee to, to meet. Um, and so, uh, I thought this was appropriate to, uh, bring to y'all's attention to see if you wanted to make an appointment of a, of a, of a second council member to the subcommittee, or what you would like, or what actions you would like to take, um, in order to then, with the developer's request, um, to meet with the subcommittee.
So, uh, council, you, uh, have someone is, uh, let me ask the council if there is, uh, first, let me ask Mr. Alabon, what kind of time requirements would be imposed on whatever council person, if they should volunteer?
Um, you know, I, I might defer to Councilmember Rob to answer that. My, the meetings, if we have to meet with a developer, those normally need to occur during the day. Um, like an after, well, could, what it could be a morning meeting, could be an afternoon meeting. It generally don't run that long of, at any one particular time. Um, but Councilmember Rob, do you have any input on what kind of time involvement you think it involves?
Um, well, we haven't had any, uh, recently. I would say in the last, well, actually, I can't remember when the last one was, but it was sometime last year. We haven't had any this year. Uh, uh, like Mr. Alabon said, it's during the day. So they have to be available during business hours. Uh, I personally am retired, which is one reason that I volunteered, so I'm readily available. Um, then, as he said, the, the meetings that we had were typically, uh, uh, ran at the most an hour. And then, uh, then maybe we had a city only meeting either before or after to discuss. Uh, so I'm, you know, I'm gonna say an hour and a half, maybe, uh, may, maybe, uh, um, three times every six months. I don't know, I, uh, I don't, I don't know of any, any new PIDs that anybody is interested in developing. It's only the administration of the existing ones, so, uh, something that they want to change. So those would probably be relatively short, you know? And, and, and the purpose was, you know, to come up with a recommendation to the council, um, you know, whether they should approve it or not, rather than trying to, uh, have the entire council, uh, go through this, uh, process that, you know, that can be a little, uh, tiring. Uh, and, and to have, uh, some familiar, familiarity with the process and the provisions of a public improvement, the district, you know? So, uh, hopefully that covers it.
So, uh, Mr. Alabon, I, I think there was an accompanying letter with this item. I don't see it here. But are they not considering another bond here in the imminent future? And that's why, why they requesting to get this other council person on here?
Yes, sir, there's two, there's two pending things. And to answer, uh, Councilmember Rob, um, one of them does involve a new request for PID district creation. Uh, the other is the attachment here, which is, which is actually the reason that the agenda item was brought forward. The city received this particular request from the attorney for a developer for, on the LaTerra development. The agree, the PID district that's been approved and the development agreement that's been approved for LaTerra allows the developer to develop in phases. And they've developed the early phase, and there was a bond issuance for that. And things are going pretty well and lots are selling. And now they're asking for improvement area number two to be approved. And so we will need to update the service and assessment plan and levy additional assessments for improvement area number two. That's the first thing that the subcommittee and the council will need to consider. And then in the fall, they want to, well, they, they want to begin the process in the summer to move towards issuance of bonds in the fall for the subsequent phase two and three of their development. That's what's been requested. And that is, yes, sir, that is what's driving the request to put somebody on the subcommittee so the subcommittee can meet and, and move these items forward. If that's council's.
The, uh, you know, our, all of our council members, other than Councilmember Rob, are employed. And so I assume that the, uh, um, developer can meet in the evenings.
I, I would assume so as well, Mayor. If that's the ti, only time that the, uh, that the subcommittee can meet, I'm sure they will work around whatever schedule needs to be made there. So I guess in the past, we had the ability to do that.
And they have in the past, as I recall, many years back, uh, and probably be happy to do so. So council members is that, uh, this is something that, uh, they could, uh, meet in the evening to accommodate your work schedule. Um, if anyone would, uh, be interested in, I'll say, volunteering. Do we have a show of hands that might volunteer? That'd make the nomination process easy. We gotta fill it with somebody. Okay, take one step back.
Yeah, one question, Mayor Holsey, on before, you know, I, I would say anything too is, I, I think recently, we just had PID, um, things come before the, uh, council here, probably, I think, a month ago for the, um, Sweetgrass. And so I, I guess that's sort of my question, back to you, Councilmember Rob, is, you know, you said it's every so often, but I've seen it come up here, you know, it seems like it's coming up here a little more often than every six months. Again, just trying to understand, I understand, we don't have that many developments going on, but we do have a couple that are going on. I know there's a small one going on, on the other side of, um, the Meadows. Uh, I don't know if anything's gonna be happening with that. But I could say that I'd be interested and would volunteer my time. But again, I'm, again, very busy also too, so I need to understand truly what that time commitment is.
This is Councilmember Rob, uh, yeah, that one you're talking about, uh, there's no PID involved with that. Um, I can't remember when Sweetgrass was, uh, but I don't think it's been this year. I mean, I could be wrong. Maybe, uh, Rob, uh, chime in with, what he remembers.
I, I don't want to misrepresent to the council. I think it has been a while since you brought anything forward on that, but I don't have any current recollection of timing on that, and I apologize. I don't.
Well, I can, this is Mayor Proton Morrow, I can volunteer only for like these two or three months in summer, um, until Mr., until you can talk to developers and Mr. Ricketts can take over my volunteer, because if they'll do that. But I, I can do the summer, um, during the days for, what, June, July, first of August. But I, I really like, I think Councilmember Ricketts would be wonderful, um, also.
I'm sorry, I just want to say right quick, my AirPods are about to run out of power. So if I lose you, it's because I, I, I lost power on my AirPods. I'm gonna try to get a, I'm also losing power on my iPad, but I'll reconnect.
Okay, uh, City Secretary, uh, please note that, uh, Councilmember Ricketts is, uh, leaving the council meeting. It's at 9:17 PM with intentions to return.
That, that'd be Councilmember Nahera, Mayor Holsey.
I'm not, I'm, uh, myself. Councilmember Nahera leaves 9:17.
Thank you. Mayor Holsey, this is Marcy Lamb. Um, I might ask Rob to talk about the annual commitments with the SAPs on the PIDs, because, um, even if there's not a new PID, there are the annual SAPs that they usually do. And those are, you know, kind of all at the same time of the year. But most of that, uh, ongoing commitment for this committee would be, um, kind of a email, virtual reviewing documents, not necessarily a meeting. Um, maybe you could speak to that and, because, um, that is an ongoing thing and wouldn't necessarily require a meeting, um, by that committee, although the committee reviews the documents. And then, um, yes, if there's a new PID, there, there is a little groundwork. But I think because the, um, council members that have been on that committee are familiar now with, with all of the questions and the, um, machinations they need to go through, that it's a, it's a little bit streamlined. I think in the beginning, I think, um, Councilmember Rob could attest that it was a little more involved. But, but as the, um, progression of getting familiar with the PIDs, it, it has become more streamlined.
You did a great job, Marcy, on that explanation. Um, I, I, you're correct, the ongoing PIDs that we have approved, um, every year there is an annual update required to the service and assessment plans. Our PID consultant generally works on those service and assessment plan updates, as you alluded to. And so the subcommittee, uh, does generally just review those and review the updates. And, uh, when they, when they come forward to council, and all those are done at, generally, as you said, one, one point in time of the year, which I think is over the summertime. Is it not, Marcy? Uh, so they're probably, they're probably getting ready to come due. Um, yes, so there will be some, there will be some involvement in that as, as well as working on, uh, any potential new PID. And as attached to this agenda item, really, the fir, the first item is the request for the LaTerra, um, uh, additional.
Rob, do you, can you kind of, uh, just, you know, give an idea, uh, you know, these, the annual meetings? What kind of time involvement? I think that's what everybody's concerned about, is what are they looking at?
Yeah, I, I, I don't.
But to study at, you know, at their home, you know, beginning prepared for the meeting. What are they, what are they looking at?
There will be some document review that's done, uh, in the past. The, 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 the subcommittee members review the documents in advance of our meeting. And I'm sure they probably spent a couple of hours, uh, on each of those items, you know, prior to any, any meeting or those annual updates. So, um, you know, that's where I, I don't, I can't speak to how long they actually put in, uh, outside the confines of the meetings, which was kind of, and I didn't mean to put you on the spot, Councilmember Rob, but that was, I, I didn't know if you had any thoughts on how much actual time you had put in. That's why I threw that question to you, and I apologize for that. But, um, you know, I don't think it's any, I don't think it's substantial amount of time, um, but it will require some time to review those documents, um, in preparation for the subcommittee meetings.
I'm gonna make a suggestion here to the council is that, uh, and I understand everybody's urgency. You want to know, I mean, you're ready to help anytime, anyway you can, but you don't want to overobligate yourself. I understand that and I appreciate that. So I would, I'd suggest this. What if you table this item to the next city council meeting? And we'll try to get you more quantifiable information as to a time commit and, and describe to you what's happening. You know, uh, I assume that's okay, Mr. Alabon. We can feed them that kind of information outside of a public meeting? So they can come back to the public meeting and make their decision then?
Well, if I had the information to provide, I could. If I had the information to provide, I would, I would have answered the questions directly tonight. I, I, I can't.
We can give our best estimate though, you know, given time to, I mean, this is, uh, I'm like, surprise, Councilmember Rob, how much time have you spent? Well, I, let me think.
I'll volunteer, Council, Mayor Proton Morrow, I'll, I'll volunteer. Because that email makes me nervous about running a bit behind the proposed schedule, the quick pace, these are, these are words that give me a little bit of pause. So I'll volunteer, um, and then see how it goes.
You wanna make a motion to nominate yourself?
Do I need a motion?
Yes.
Mayor Holsey, I'll make the motion. I move to, uh, Mayor Proton Morrow, the position of, on the PID subcommittee.
Motion's been made by, uh, Councilmember Ricketts to, uh, for, uh, Mayor Proton Morrow to the PID subcommittee. Is there a second?
This is Councilmember Rob, I have a second.
There is a second. Any further discussion? I call for the vote, all in favor, Councilmember Ricketts?
Aye.
Councilmember Nahera? Uh, Councilmember Nahera is not with us yet. Okay.
I saw him giving thumbs up there.
Excuse me, uh, Mayor Proton Morrow, you can vote for yourself.
Okay, aye.
Uh, and Councilmember Clark?
Aye.
Councilmember Nahera, are you with us? Councilmember Nahera is effectively not in the council meeting, so, uh, there's no vote there. Uh, motion passes, uh.
Mayor, you didn't ask for my vote, Councilmember Rob.
Oh, I thought I had, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Councilmember Rob.
Hi.
Thank you, Councilmember Rob. I think I was just so wrapped up, I couldn't hear Councilmember Nahera, sorry.
Mayor Holsey, one quick, Mayor Holsey, this is Councilmember Ricketts. I'd just like to point out, Councilmember Rob, Councilman, or Mayor Proton Morrow, if you provide me information that I could bring myself up to speed to, I would be interested in this also too, so.
Okay, well, we have a motion, I'm about to count the vote, please. Um, so we have, this motion is passed for zero. Uh, motion passes. Thank you, uh, Mayor Proton Morrow, stepping up. Uh, Councilmember Nahera, if you can hear us, please signal us. Okay, I don't think that's gonna work. You got technical difficulties, I'm gonna say that, uh, you're technically out of the meeting. Um, it's a requirement that, uh, we be able to hear and, and hear you. Okay. Um. Okay, item 8J, discussion of fire station parking lot expansion. I had this put on here, and reason being is, um, um, a former city engineer said that he had bids in, and I was asking. Hello? Someone, uh, please mute your mics if we're not, you're not speaking. Uh, anyway, I had, I was asking a series of questions. And, um, the bids being, uh, did you get them in? Yes, and how many? Well, we got seven with one no bid, we got six active bids. What kind of spread do you got? And I think, as I recall, and Mr. Quinn, correct me if I'm wrong, it's like somewhere in the neighborhood of 158,000 down to around 90,000, that kind of a spread. Is that characteristic about, Mr. Quinn, is that about right? And?
Yes, the low bid was 95,000.
Ninety-five?
There's about a $70,000 difference between low and.
And I, I inquired, uh, uh, so you got a group of center bids there? And, uh, I believe you said yes. And, um, he says, but we have to go with the lowest bid. And I was surprised that, and I asked, why do we have to go with the lowest bid? I said, most often, government entities go with best value. I said, most often, government entities go with best value bids. And it was stated that, no, cities didn't have that choice. Well, that concerned me, because fact is, cities do have that choice. So we're about to go into a bid that was purely determined by the dollar value. And who knows? I don't know who, I haven't seen them, and I don't know who the companies are. So I'm not implying anything to anybody, but that's not good business on our part to take absolute bottom dollar bids. And there is no requirement to do that, as Mr. Alabon can attest. Is that correct, Rob?
No, sir, not exactly. If the bid, so if the bids were, if we bid this as the lowest responsible bid, and that's the basis that we need to make the award on, or we need to reject all the bids. So we do need to take action at some point on this item, one way or another. If we're going to reject all the bids and rebid, we certainly can do that. But as far as best value bidding, under chapter 252, if we're going to spend more than $50,000, the city's required to competitively bid an item. And there are, there are certain types of items that the law says we cannot use best value bidding on. Waterline projects, sewer line projects, road projects. There's a, there's a portion of the statute that says.
We're doing a, we're doing a parking lot here, Rob, can we do it on a parking lot?
No, I think it says we can't use best value bidding. We can use the competitive sealed proposal method under chapter 2269 as an alternative. So I don't, I assume maybe that's why Travis bid this originally the way he did. But, so if you want to look at alternatives, I'm happy to look into that and figure out what your alternatives are. But I'm not sure that best value bidding actually works for this project.
Mayor Holsey, this is Councilmember Ricketts.
Yes.
A question to the staff. Is there any type of technical evaluation done on the bid after you've received it to make sure that they've met the specifications? Because to me, when you have that much of a disarray between two different bids, you're seeing one person may not completely understand the specs, and one may have overengineered that spec. And so that's what I was going to say, any type of technical eval?
There is a pre-bid conference with all the contractors, the requirements explained to them. The sheeting near review, the H bid for value, value of price per unit, et cetera. And then he would check the references to see if they've done good work in other cities. And that is the process.
Is there anybody that looks at it and actually says, okay, this, yes, we did this spec, and it does meet it, or it does not meet it, or barely meets it? Do we have anyone that's looked at it in that aspect?
Councilmember, this is Rob. When we do a, when we do a lowest competitive bid, that should be something that the engineer would look at, because basically what the law says is we have to award the contract, i- if it's been under straight competitively bid, have to award the contract to the lowest responsible bidder. And, and so the only basis to not go with the low bid is if they're not responsible, meaning that they can't handle the type of project, they don't have the financial wherewithal, they don't have the experience, and that would be something that the engineer would do and determine. Then bids would be presented to the council for review. There are a number of reasons that there can be a spread in bids. One's based on pure hunger of the contractor. You know, I, I don't, I, I'm not an expert in that area, so I don't know if this spread is within the range to be expected or not, but, again, that would be something I would expect the engineer to be able to find on. But I don't know if that, if that helps, I was just trying to answer some questions.
Another reason, counsel, another reason, I mean, that was one point I brought this up on. Another reason I brought this back and want you to look at this again is the design itself and where it's placed at the fire department was all predicated on 156 going to seven lanes. And that it would eat up our parking lot. I don't know that that is particularly a valid driver for the design.
Yeah, this is Mayor Proton Maro, I have the design, and the red spots were for 156. It doesn't even, it doesn't even cut into the parking lot at all. I found the original, well, first of all, I want to make a comment that at least it was under the $188,000 we allotted. I'm glad that the bids came in below what we said we were going to spend. But I have the document, both with and without future extension of 156. And it doesn't, I know y'all can't see that, so I apologize, but it doesn't have anything to do with the existing parking lot. And the, the added one is not near it either. So I don't, I must be unfamiliar with what you're referring to.
Well, it was, when it was brought up originally to go out and bid for this project, the driver was, one of the main drivers, there was two drivers. One, that FM 156, when it would, if it were to go to seven lanes, would cut into this parking lot, take it, and would drive that relocation. Also, I do understand that they need further, or more parking lot spaces for their volunteers and other folks that use the fire facilities. So, uh, I'm looking and requesting that the council just look at all of this again, one more time, before we award a bid. And look at why there's such a spread, and try to explain to ourselves, what are we getting into here? We've experienced Hasslet Park, I don't think we want to go down that road again.
I'm sorry, what about Hasslet Park? This is Mayor Proton Maro. What about the roads in Hasslet Park?
Roads, Mayor Proton.
And Hasslet Park?
The vitality of roads, right. They're virtually new and got one inch wide cracks in them.
Well, that, that's correct. The part they're doing down on the other path or third is amazing, and we're very excited that it's almost done.
Oh, yeah, they, since the design has since changed. But I suspect on the front end, where, is where it'll have to be rebuilt.
Right, so this is, this is discussion only, there's no action, correct?
That's correct. No actions required.
So I have on our three, our March 15th meeting, there's nothing mentioned about 156. But it was talking about the going from 20 to 35, 20 to 35 parking lots. And some of the, the driving factors, like you said, was volunteers, now that there's full-time staff always there, they, the volunteers are more eager to be there as well for training. I have written down HOA meetings, HSA meetings. And then I, I have on 418, the request for bid, as you, as you said. So are we, is this something we, well, we can have action? But you're saying bring to our next meeting, will that affect any of the bids and the timeline of when we have to respond? That was my question.
We can, uh, if there's an action to be made here, uh,
Oh, there's no, I don't think.
That's Rob Alabon. Can we make that, can you, can someone make a motion on this, act on it?
Oh, sir, it's just been, it's just been posted for the discussion. But we do, we do need to act on the bids at some point, as I mentioned earlier. So if council wants to reject all these bids and go out and rebid, that, we do need an action item to actually have action, one way or another, on what council wants to do. The other thing is, to answer Mayor Proton's question, I don't have the bid. I, I don't know what it exactly says, but typically, when you ask a contractor to submit a bid, their pricing's only going to be valid for a certain period of time. So by not having this on for action tonight, whether those bids will actually even still stand up, and whether contractors will still honor those bids, we'd have to look at the details of the bids to see what kind of timeframe they committed to, or whether they're still willing to honor those bids. I know construction costs, as you all know from watching the news and stuff, are changing daily, basically. So I don't know what impact that would have on any of this, as, as well.
Counsel, can we bring this back to the agenda and look at the design and the motivation for it and why it is where it is? And look at the bidding process?
I don't know if you can hear me or not. I can tell you from a subcontract perspective, there is a validity on all those bids, as you're saying, Rob. It would be nice to know what those validity periods are. You even brought up a bigger concern, Mayor Proton Morrow, when you said that we, that our engineering thought it'd be $188,000, and now we have a bid in there that's half that cost. To me, that's a, that is a red flag, coming from a subcontract, I've been doing subcontracting for 20 years. That's a red flag saying, hey, do we meet the spec, that 95? I do know that some people like to come in and actually get that business and bid low, but that is a huge detriment. And I would be very concerned if they were going to meet the spec, and if, or we would have to do reworks down the road. So, um, again, we're just, this is just a discussion, but just through this discussion has brought up a lot of red flags for myself.
Yeah, and since there's no motion here, should we put this on the agenda for the next meeting? Is there any urgency to go back to these, these contractors on the bids? I guess Councilmember Ricketts' point is, what are the due dates on these bids when we have to reply to them?
You can make a motion to have this on the next agenda item.
This is Councilmember Clark. We're having a discussion about an item that we, the bids are there, but we're not seeing them. So to me, it seems kind of weird that we're having a discussion on an item that council doesn't have the information in front of them. So until that information can be provided to us, I, I don't really see the point of this discussion.
Well, the point of it is, is the big spread of the bids. I guess my mistake, thinking that we cannot go for best value. And also the motivation for which the, where and how this parking lot was designed to begin with. So we'll have it on the next meeting for a discussion, consider an act. And with the bids.
Is it possible that I, I can still make a statement before you close this item?
Oh, yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Thank you, this is Patricia Hillborne, and I just wanted to speak in favor of this parking lot project. Some of the points that I, that I was going to make have already been made, which is that this is a, this is a request that came from the fire department, irregardless, excuse me, regardless of any other circumstances that might be affecting our city, and that they need more parking there at the, at the fire department. This was a project that was approved and went out for bids, and now the bids have come back. So I'm sorry that the council hasn't had the opportunity to look at those bids and, and vote on it. But I do hope this will come to the council again, which the mayor has already indicated he is willing to do, and that the council can make a decision, too, as the city attorney said, either accept the low bid or reject all the bids. So thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
I, I just have one more question. So, Mayor, as you mentioned that this will come forward to our next agenda, or next council meeting. So at that time, can we expect to see the bids and possibly a staff report? Especially since we have council members, and you as well, Mayor, who weren't on council at the time. So we can kind of bring everyone up to speed, and like how Tanya had that diagram, bring that forward so everyone can see that.
Yeah. Mayor Proton Morrow, can you forward that document to Mr. Quinn, so we know what? I mean, I saw a piece of paper, I don't know what was on it.
Yes, no problem. I sure will.
And Mr. Quinn will assemble all that information that we're requesting, so that we can look at the bids, we can look at the design as well. All right, it was important to me that we bring it up and talk about it. Thank you. All right. Next item, executive session, the city council reserves the right, we can adjourn into the executive session. This item, during the course of the meeting, to seek legal advice from its attorney regarding any item on the proposed agenda as authorized by section 551.071 in the Texas Government Code. Additionally, pursuant to the provisions of chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, city council may adjourn into executive session in accordance with the authority contained in section 551.072 Government Code, deliberations about real property. And this specific item is the Alliance Texas Asslet Accessibility Improvement Project, AKA Asslet Parkway. Counsel, it, I would like for us to, we come back and adjourn now and report back in five minutes for a short break. Would that be okay with you folks? So it is 9:43 PM, June 7, 2021. The open meeting is closed. We will resume the executive session closed meeting in five minutes. And I'll make announcement of the actual executive meeting time then. Thank you, see you in five minutes. I'm sorry, my, my mic was, is Councilwoman Clark online?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, very good, very good. We have all the council back. All five members are present. City attorney's president. Very good, our city secretary's present.
Yes.
I reconvene, excuse me, someone say something? I reconvene the open session at 11:03 PM on June 7, 2021. Item 10, consider and take any action resulting from executive session. There are no items to take action on. Future agenda items throughout our meeting, we've had several agenda items noted from council and from the city attorney, which they will supply to city secretary. Any other discussion on future agenda items?
This is Mayor Proton Maro, I had one I'd like to add. I wanted to request that we add the strategic plan on the next city council meeting, just so we can have that before we go into budgeting.
Have what?
The strategic plan as an agenda item.
Okay, for review, or just?
Yes, for review, that'd be great, thank you.
Okay, because what we have is, what we have has existed since 2017, I believe it is.
No, I'm talking about the updated strategic plan, I'm sorry.
An updated version, other than what's on the website?
I believe the other website is correct.
Okay, all right, very good, we'll have it.
Thank you.
All right, any other items?
Yeah, this is, I'm sorry, I, I yield to Councilwoman Clark.
Oh, I was just gonna request that for a future agenda item that we consider having the, the city secretary position recurring on the agenda, just so we can get updates on it, and whether that's updates from the mayor or Jim, anything like that.
Sure, we'll give you a, be in. Sure, we'll give you, uh, Ben, uh, we'll have that in our updates up in the front end. Uh, Councilmember, uh, Rob, you had something?
Yes, um, I would like to have a discussion, first a briefing, uh, possibly from the city attorney, and then followed by a discussion on the roles and responsibilities of our uh, elected and appointed officials for our form of government, being a Taipei general city. So we all know, you know, I, I, I sense that we have a, some disagreement there, so let's all review the law. What are ordinance say, and then we can move forward from there.
Sure, good idea. And also, I would encourage each one of you, council members, uh, you all got a new local government code. Just to read that as well for yourself, and that'd be a good foundation for, uh, um, Rob Alabon to play off of, that you got that foundation underneath you and come in with questions. Any other items? Uh, and Councilmember, uh, Rob, when did you want that? Just in the future, here near, the near term? Or the next?
Well, I would say in the near term. It doesn't have to be next time, cause, um, you know, I'm gonna yield to discretion of, you know, we don't have meetings running into one, two o'clock. So, uh, as long as we had it within, uh, a month, I would think, uh, would be okay. I know the second meetings, when we have all the reports tend to run long, so it'd be okay with me if we deferred that, you know, this to the first meeting in July.
Very good.
That's agreeable, and you also give Rob more time to prepare it.
Very good. Uh, okay, unless there's any other items, we'll go to item twelve. Uh, is adjournment, I have a motion to adjourn.
It's Councilmember Rob, I move to adjourn.
Is there a second?
I'll second, with Member Ricketts.
All right, motion's made and seconded to adjourn the meeting. Uh, roll call vote, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Morrow?
Aye.
Councilmember, uh, Clark?
Aye.
Councilmember Ricketts?
Aye.
Councilmember Nahera?
Aye.
Councilmember Rob?
Aye.
All in favor, five oh, meetings adjourned. Thank you all. Have a good night. Sorry it went so long. Uh, thanks all the, thank all the staff and support personnel behind the scenes here that made this, uh, happen. Uh, Council, I wanna tell you, they've done a lot of work. So, uh, next time you see particularly like Stephen and, uh, and James, um, Ms. White, uh, there's others, uh, tell them all thank you. Mr. Rogers, I appreciate you showing up. Ms. Lamb, thank you all. Hello, Barbara.